Afternoon. Welcome to Moore County Schools Board of Education Work Session Meeting on November 3, 2025. We're called to order at 1:30 p.m. Is there a motion to go into closed session for the purposes as stated on the agenda? Motion by Ms. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Doll and Ms. Bruno. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll now go into closed session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to return to open session?
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Benway, second. By Ms. Davis, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to add, oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to amend the agenda to add two items. Three A, and of course, everything else will be relettered, is to add an item, an authorization to release portions of the closed session minutes from the September 2, 2025 meeting related to property acquisition, including legal advice. And item three B, to be a ratification of the purchase of the McDonald parcel.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Doll as stated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Are there any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor of adding those two items as stated by Dr. Doll to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they're added, thank you ma'am. All right, so that'll move everything else down in the alphabet. So at this time, we'll have our pledge of allegiance.
Need a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Oh, so sorry. Thank you, sir. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Dr. Doll, second. Second. Mr. Benway, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Now, we're ready for our pledge. And Mr. Johnson, would you please lead us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Davis, if you'll lead us in a moment of silence.
If everyone would join in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, we're at pending item, excuse me, pending action and discussion, and we have a new item, item A. And Mr. Schwartz, if you'll help, help me, because I did not have those notes in front of me, if you'll read item three A.
The motion would be to authorize the release of portions of closed session minutes of September 2, 2025 that relate to property acquisition, including legal advice, I believe was the motion, the agenda item. So you need a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Okay, so you want to make the motion, Dr. Doll?
I move that we release the redacted minutes of the September 2, 2025 closed session related to property acquisition, including legal advice. And I know I left out a couple of words, Mr. Schwartz. Was that close enough?
You're good.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Davis, any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. That was approved. And now, we're at item B. And Mr. Schwartz, if you'll give us some, once you get caught up, you'll read that and provide explanation.
Item three B is ratification of the purchase of the McDonald parcel of land. There've been, there's been some discussion about this. We don't believe there's any difficulty, any legal problem with the purchase as it was affected. The land has been closed on by the, by the board as directed. And while we don't believe there's any problem with that direction under the open meetings law or the purchase itself, this would be a ratification of that purchase of the parcel of land that the board has already closed on. It does not address any other issues that are related to that land or the school site in terms of funding or what it will be used for, but it does ratify, it would ratify the purchase of the McDonald parcel.
So do we have a motion as stated by Mr. Schwartz?
So there's a motion to ratify the purchase of the McDonald parcel.
Okay. Okay, any comments? All those in favor of that, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
That was six to one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now, we're at item C, Moore County Schools, 2025-27 Selected School Improvement Plans. Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Miss Sinon has come up, but this is, these school improvement plans were presented to the board by their principals, the 21st and 22nd of October. And we appreciate the board's feedback and questions. And this comes with my recommendation for the board's approval at your business meeting next Monday. So we're certainly happy to answer questions if needed, but really appreciate the great job our principals did.
All right, do we have any questions? Miss Sinon, I just want to say that I thoroughly enjoyed the two days of hearing from our principals on our school improvement plans. They were outstanding, very thoughtful, very collaborative, and I look forward to seeing good results. Any other comments?
I did think of something after. I learned that these school improvement plans are a little bit unique to Moore County schools, the process that we go through, and I think that it's very valuable. And just should be noted that not every school district is as thorough in how each school operates individually as Moore County schools is.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, hearing no further comments. We'll go to item C, out-of-state field trips.
Dr. Katz will come up and present. We have three field trips, Union Pines, Pinecrest, and West End Elementary. Dr. Katz and Miss Sinon.
Good afternoon. I'm here to represent, so Union Pines High School JROTC air rifle team would like to visit York, South Carolina, and compete there. Pinecrest High School track team also wants to compete, but they want to go to Liberty University in January. And then, last but not least, the Weston Elementary School Safety Patrol wants to visit Washington DC, and they want to explore the nation's history, government, and civic values. They want to visit multiple monuments and memorials that will help students understand American history and civic leadership. So I have those three for you to review. Any questions?
Those come with my recommendation for you to approve next week.
All right, sounds exciting, thank you. All right, item E, endorsement of design build for technology and planning accountability and research building. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm returning right over to Ms. Purvis. We have talked with the board a good deal about utilizing a design build process for replacement of our technology department building, as well as our planning, accountability, and research. That's departments led up by Mr. Eklund and Ms. Fall. And I'll just let Ms. Purvis walk us through the RFQ process that was used and what we're asking the board approval for today. Ms. Purvis.
Yes, sir. So we issued that RFQ for a design build so that we could get a good idea of how much we were looking at if we were to replace that IT and PAR building when that time comes. We all know that's needed. So we issued that on July 13th. We decided to utilize design build. As you know, design build will save money. The same firm will design it as well as build it. We're looking at a value build process, which means we'd have offices, warehouse, storage, all on one site. Originally, we were looking at 16,000 square feet or less. However, we did consult with IT and with PAR to get an idea of exactly what they needed. It looks like we have just a little over 12,000 square, 12,500 square feet that will be needed. So not as big as we originally planned, and we still have plenty of room for everything that they need in that. We had four firms submit their qualifications, Bobbit, Edifice, Sammet, and Retson Company. After reviewing, the staff selected Retson as the best fit for the proposed project. Retson is local, they're out of West End. They successfully completed local projects such as Sand Hills Classical, a 600 edition there, Ace Hardware, office and warehouse spaces in Southern Pines, Many Dollar Generals, and they have experience in design building, combined office, warehouse, and storage buildings. The real selling point of Retson was the work that they've completed in Moore County, especially, you know, Sand Hills Classical. So they have experience in dealing with schools and what's required for school settings in that design build process. Endorsing Retson as a selected firm will allow us to develop plans. Right now, we just have the basic footprint, but it will allow us the ability to know the amount we can expect to pay to complete this new building, allowing us to move quickly when a site is ready. After completing that work, the architectural development of this 12,500, I think it was 56, 556 square feet plan, should cost no more than $50,000. And once the site is determined, the site plan, which would just not be site work, but the plan to, you know, elevations and whatnot, $55,000. So once we're ready to move forward with the build, staff would then bring you a final plan for review, complete with a construction amount for your approval. What you're endorsing today is just the use of Retson as our design build firm for this project, and you're authorizing the ability to move forward with plan development and when the final site is determined, the development of a site plan. So for today, you're authorizing up to, or Monday, up to $50,000 for architectural plans and up to $55,000 for a site plan, for a total of no more than $105,000 without additional board approval. So this is not asking for an approval amount or moving forward on a build, this is just asking you to endorse the use of Retson as our design build firm, and then to endorse up to $105,000 for the development of those plans so that they will be ready when the time comes.
All right, any questions, comments?
I guess I have one. So are we confident that, that Retson will be able to work with our timeframe? You know, we have things up in the air, but when we make decisions, then we like to move ahead. So they could provide the design, and then when we have a site, we say, okay, we're ready for you to do the site plan. They could do the site plan. And then, when we're ready, go ahead with the building that we'd expect them to show up reasonably soon?
Yes, ma'am. Although they're a local company, they are quite a large company and work not just in our local area, but across the state. So they do have the staff and capability to move when we need to move. And this design, the design build will be utilizing a metal building frame and then building within that. So from start to finish, they anticipate that, you know, we could have this building once the site is determined and once we're ready, you know, within six months, we have to get permitting, and then within six months, we could have a building completed because it is a design build, it's a value build, and we'll utilize a metal building and then go within.
All right, any other?
I was just going to offer that I'm really excited to see this. I'm glad that it's moving forward. You said you consulted with staff, which is great. I would say, as the time goes on, anytime you're building anything like that, just keep bouncing it back to staff, making sure the space is what they need as they go. I just remember whenever we did that with the new schools, I always appreciated that process of, you know, back and forth and...
Just the initial floor plan that you guys saw me present when we had our collaborative meeting Monday, we bounced back and forth with Kate Fall and Kent and their teams about four times.
Cool.
Just to make sure that we had, do we have the right amount of offices? Do we have the space for tech? So they were integral in just getting that initial footprint down.
Great, that's awesome. Yeah, and that's, and then I would just like to ask the construction committee, when you guys meet, to start discussing, you know, next steps of, if we move forward with that, what does that mean for the, you know, the building that we currently have, the warehouse out of Bass, what do we do with it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
I just have a couple of quick questions and observations. So what's the total budget cost for this? What do you have fenced off for this?
Right now, without final plans, Retson anticipates 3.3 million, and that's all in. However, that is with $990,000 put in there for site development. They did that prior to the purchase of the parcel that is there now. So that would be worst-case scenario. They are not expecting, if we are to put it on that parcel, they're not expecting anywhere near that. So we're, you know, we'd be looking at 3 million and under for the total of that building.
Okay, good. And I noticed that you separated site plans from the architectural plans. I assume that's because, because the controversy over the site, we could plop it down elsewhere, right?
Correct, that's right. And what I don't want to do is have elevations developed and a site plan developed. I don't want to pay for that until we are certain where it's going to go. So we would do the architectural plans, and then, once we know for sure where the board wants to put that, then we would do the site plans.
Yeah, yeah. And again, this was expressed during the joint meeting, but it was kind of my, you know, my impression, the reason why we put it at the new Carthage Elementary was strictly, it was the next school we're building. But if we're dealt a different hand, I assume we'd look at that and plop it down somewhere if it makes more sense, right? And then, what's the total number of employees that are going to be there?
The total number that would be there all day, every day is 18. There, there's 25 or six that are come in and out of the building and check out periodically throughout the day. They have an office there, a drop zone, our DIFs training site, but the total number, I think, that's there all day, every day is about 18.
Okay, okay. And then, I had the same question, Steve did. We got to start thinking about the disposition of the, our current building.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Purvis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Purvis.
Yes, sir.
All right, item F, first reading of new and revised policies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Patterson, come up, the policy committee met last week and went through these policies. I'll first turn it over to the policy committee chair, Ms. Davis, is there anything she wants to share? Then Dr. Patterson can walk through these policies. Ms. Davis.
Yeah, there's not much to elaborate on. I think that most, or I know that most of these came from the North Carolina School Board Association, and our Title IX issues needed to be cleaned up, and I'll just let Dr. Patterson go over them with us. Thank you.
Thank you. So all 14 policies are policies that are being aligned to the North Carolina School Boards Association and reviewed by Schwartz Law, Acrobat. So I just wanted to mention, the first five are all Title IX related. We did not change our policies initially, whenever they were pushed out by the previous administration. However, they were not updated at that time either. So these are just mostly minor updates, and again, they were, they're now aligned to the School Board Association and reviewed by Mr. Schwartz.
And just to double down on that, Dr. Patterson, these, these now will align with current.
Yes.
Title IX regulations and policies, correct, Mr. Schwartz?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure that's crystal clear. Thank you.
Ms. Cindy, can you make that a little larger? No, I can't make it out. Thank you.
So when you start with policy 1310-4002 parental involvement, the first change you'll see is on page seven. And basically, it's technical, but also just adding a policy in there referencing one of the Title IX policies. And then, you'll see a few little minor changes on page nine. And then, on page 10, this is a new information that came about by general statute that talks about students in sleeping quarters when they go on field trips. And that's, that's it for that one. All right. Policy two, 1710-4020, 7230, discrimination and harassment prohibited by federal law. And again, this policy is being updated to align with current Title IX policies. Number three, policy 1720-4030, 7235, Title IX, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. And they start, changes start on the first page. That was a little bit shorter than the last policy. Okay. Number four, policy 1725-4035, 7236, Title IX, sexual harassment prohibited, conduct, and reporting process. And it starts on the first page.
Are these all right out of, I'm sorry?
These all right out of the State School Board Association model policy, or are they modified?
They're aligned to the North Carolina School Board Association policy, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, number five, policy 1726-4036, 7237, Title IX, sexual harassment grievance process. There's one little correction on the, update on the first page. I think that's it. Only change on that policy. All right, policy six, 3320, field trips. And this, again, talks about the sleeping quarters when students are on field trips. You'll see multiple things today in different, in multiple policies. If that made sense, what I just said, I don't think it did, but... All right, policy seven, 3510, religious-based exemptions from school programs. This was an update in the fall, North Carolina School Board Association updates. We did not have, currently have this policy, so it's been adopted.
Driven by new general statute?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, number eight, policy 3620, extracurricular activities in student organizations. And again, on page two, you will see the information about sleeping quarters when on field trips. Policy nine, 4120, school admissions. There's a few crossouts on the first page. Second page, just some changes to the policy numbers that aligns more correctly, accurately. And then, we have the additional information, the remote enrollment of children of military families, which is new general statute and required in policy. Okay, 10, policy 4318, is the use of wireless communication devices. Now, Dr. Locklear probably mentioned this, that this was put into place at the beginning of this school year so that there wouldn't be changes throughout the school year, and this aligns with new general statute about device use.
And just to clarify, it wasn't the policy that was put in place, but the practice of the policy was put in place.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. And this just outlines, like you said, to line up with what the new law is. Thank you.
B is in Bravo. I just have a question, because I don't think any of this was discussed or debated at the school board at large. And it's kind of odd, because a couple of months ago, this was a hot board issue when the General Assembly passed this. What, I mean, my questions are, what have other school districts done, and what did our policy committee consider? Because I seem to recall seeing in the news, some school districts had cellphone lockers for some grade levels, and students had to put their cellphones in lockers, and apparently we're letting ours keep them with them. What were the discussions in committee?
Cindy, we think that bigger, Ms. Brune is... Yeah, we didn't discuss how it's policed throughout the school system. We let the principal decide how they manage that, or the teacher in each individual class. And Dr. Locklear can speak to it more if he wants to.
Beginning of the year, I shared this at the previous board meeting, because I believe this came up in some way, Mr. Hensley. May have been a question from you, I can't recall. But we, we did, over the summer, when we knew the general statute was coming, meet and make sure we had a practice, a regulation, and procedure in place to make sure we're compliant with the law, and to make sure that we're consistently doing it across our middle and high schools. So the same practice is being used. So we had our, we brought in our principals, et cetera, and we put together a process and procedure and talked a little bit about that. For the most part, most of our schools are already restricting the use of those during instructional time. So this wasn't a huge shift for Moore County Schools. The policy allowed you to do that already. So it wasn't, as you've seen in some school districts, this was a huge deal. In our district, it really wasn't, because it really was something we already were doing for the most part.
So none of our schools are going to have, our, our students are going to keep their devices with them. There's no requirement to put them in a locker.
Our middle schools put them in their lockers. Our high schools, you're going to see, either they keep it on themselves and they got to be off, or they have a, a, basically looks like a shoe bin or a calculator bin, where they're dropping their devices in there when they're coming to classroom. And please, Ms. Sinan, come in and share if I'm sharing anything that isn't accurate. Is that correct, Ms. Sinan? Okay.
Just dropped everything. Yeah, that's correct. And if they have them in class, they've got to have them in their bookbag. They can't just leave them in their pockets, or have them out on the desk, turned off or anything. They've got to put them in their bookbag. But all of our teachers have processes and procedures within their classroom to make sure that they are not out during instructional time.
How's it going?
It's going great. I'm not going to say that it's perfect. You know, there's always, there's always situations, but the teachers deal with it, the administrators deal with it. But like Dr. Locklear said, because we already had systems and processes in place, where some other districts really didn't, it, it has not been a huge transition. You know, all of our middle schools, it's, they put them in their locker. That has been the rule for years. Your cellphone goes in your locker, you can only take it out at the end of the day. For high school, it's been, it's in your bookbag, it's turned off, it's, you know, it, it really hasn't been an issue. Or it's in those pockets. You know, I'll walk into some of those high school, high school classrooms, and they'll have, it looks like, like the old calculator pockets. And every kid has a number, and they stick their phone in there, and then they get it as they leave.
I wanted to say that last spring, I, I watched that in progress at Union Pines. Seamless, no problem at all.
Yes, sir.
Very efficient.
It's just the expectation of our, I mean, of the teachers and the principals, so the kids just, they follow the expectation.
Yeah, I was going to say what Ken said. I saw it in practice last year already before this law took effect. So again, we're very diligent to teach our students.
Okay, moving on to number 11, policy 5070-7350, public records retention, release, and disposition. There's one change on the second page, and it's to be compliant with general statute of posting compensation. All right, number 12, 6125, administering medicines to students. Again, there's only one change, and that's on page, well, actually, I was wrong. No, I'm on the wrong one. Let me get the 12. Yeah, I skipped over too far. I knew there's only one, one change. And that was just to change the epinephrine to, from auto-injector to delivery system, because of the different products that are available now. Policy 6340, transportation service and vehicle contracts. And it's just a one pager, and you can see what's been added there. And the last one is policy 7820, personnel files. And there's a couple of references there that has been added. And then on page six, you see the exact same information about compensation being publicized. And then on page seven, where the website publication of information has been added to align with general statute. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're at item G, School Board Meeting Agenda for November 10, 2025. I want to remind our board that the public has access to the recording of our meeting. And so I'm going to call out each item, and just let me know if it goes under action or consent. All right, so item C, Moore County Schools 2025-27 Selected School Improvement Plans, action or consent? Consent? Item D, Out-of-State Field Trips, action or consent? Consent? Item E, Endorsement of Design Build for Technology in Planning, Accountability, and Research Building, action or consent? Item F, First Reading of New and Revised Policies, action or consent? All right, thank you very much. We're at item four, Reports, Information, and Discussion, and we have our first item, AI Teaching and Learning Update. Dr. Locklear?
Yes, I'm pleased to invite Assistant Director for Technology Will Herring up to share about this item. This is something that Mr. Benway, I know, has shared some information about, and I appreciate him asking if we could have a presentation of where we stand in Moore County Schools around our review of AI and how we're supporting the effective use of that in our classrooms and with our teachers. I just want to start it off by thanking Will and Kent and their department's leadership on this issue. We have not ran around like our hair's on fire. We've had a very deliberate process with looking at where is this going to land? And what's the most effective use of this? And how do we monitor this and support our teachers and support our students, effective use of AI? Because of the great work that Will has helped lead, I asked that he do a, a presentation to the regional superintendents in the Sandhills. They were pretty blown away by our process. And, you know, this goes back, I know we hear it a lot, the Moore County Schools way. How do we go about having systems and processes and practices that are effective? So we can push great outcomes, along with our continual commitment to having great relationships and a collaborative culture. So proud of Will, proud of his leadership, and I look forward to his presentation today. So, Will, I'll hush, because I ain't the expert. You are, but I appreciate you.
So my dad was a preacher, and, and I'm a history teacher, like we mentioned, so I tend to ramble. So I'm going to put my watch right there, which I learned from my father. All right. So, good afternoon, and thank you all, board, and Dr. Locklear, for giving me the chance to speak with you this afternoon. Going to be briefing you on the use of generative artificial intelligence tools for faculty and staff for the 2025, 2026 school years in Moore County School. So, if I may, before we get into it, I want to take a minute and kind of define what I mean when I'm using artificial intelligence in this context. So, artificial intelligence as a branch of computer science has been around for more than 60 years. It's a big umbrella term with many subfacets beneath it. During that time, over the past 60 years, it's primarily been a background tool. It's been a, it's been a backend product that you don't necessarily know that you're operating with. In the early 2000s, a type of AI called machine learning started doing predictive services. It may have recommended products to you on Amazon. It may have helped you find the right path to go on Google Maps. It may have picked your next song on Pandora. All right? Then in the 20 teens, large language models and natural language processors, again, two other subfacets of AI. These were speech to text, voice recognition, those type of products. Those went into powering Siri and Alexa, if you're familiar with those. All right, so those were a little bit different, because they could interpret, replicate, and understand basic human speech patterns. So that was a turning point there. So in education, we've been using machine learning now for quite some time. Products like iXL or iReady, they're diagnostic tools. And that goes all the way back to the ASVAB back in the 1980s, actually. So the kind of thing where if you get a question wrong, you get a little bit easier question. You get a question right, you get a little bit harder question, okay? So that's what that's for, is really good at dialing things in. So all of that, you know, all of that, again, you didn't necessarily know what you were operating with. You weren't intentionally engaging in an AI product. So on November 30, 2022, like right at three years ago to the day, that changed. OpenAI released ChatGPT to the world. This app was different for a number of reasons. The biggest one is, for the first time, people intentionally, just normal people, were interacting with large language models. It had a very simple-to-use chat interface. People were automatically comfortable with it, because it looked like what they were used to. They were engaging with these models to generate new content. And I say new content there, because this was the beginning of generative AI. So like, take the ASVAB, it routes me to the next question that was already written. These products are generative, because it can actually mimic human creation to create products that have not existed before. So for example, if you ask it to create an image of a, you know, an animal doing X, Y, or Z based on previous training that it's done, it'll generate an image that isn't present anywhere else on the internet. It was created for that purpose, for your prompt. So again, generative AI was pretty different. To give you an idea of the scope of that and the speed of that, within five days of that app launching, there were over 1 million downloads in the United States and Canada alone. So highly disruptive, certainly a new, new form of general population access to these models than we've had before. So, why then does Moore County Schools need this discussion now? So, and I'm sorry if I'm preaching to, to the choir here, but we'll do it anyway. So, G, generative AI proficiency has become the expectation in, in the professional world. Many of the IT development jobs, those things that we've been talking about for years and years and years, those are now actually being pigeonholed into specifically AI-specific job tasks. Those are the skills that are being targeted now. What's, I wouldn't say more surprisingly, maybe what's more impactful is, taking computer science out of the equation, those skills are also being requested by all of our employers across all the different fields. It's now the expectation that any employee should be able to use tools, including these, to maintain or increase their productivity in the workplace. So again, that, that education on how to use these tools, and a little bit of fluency there, is the expectation. It's no longer the outlier. So, students that we are graduating now, when we graduate our students, they can already, could already, be at a disadvantage against their peers who are already using these tools. And for that, I mean, college essays, scholarships, job application, things like that. Where they're submitting writing samples of any kind, our students could be at a disadvantage in that case against their peers. So to maintain competitiveness in the marketplace, Moore County Schools, we need to help our students know how to use these tools safely to maximize their marketability in a technology-driven world. So they need to know how to use it. But the flip side of that, so the other side of that coin, students now need an increased capacity to think critically, like we've never had to before. We need to develop strong, independent thinkers that are ready to, to handle a world in which AI content is misleading or just out and out false. They need to have practice spotting generative AI, and practice with knowing how to fact-check what they see in here. So this is the timeline that brings us to here. I'll just kind of talk you through, again, that deliberative process that Dr. Locklear was saying. So the school year 2324, we, we essentially monitored what was going on in the generative AI world broadly, and then specifically in the ed tech world. It was happening very, very quickly. There were districts around the state and in the country that were jumping one extreme or the other. At that time, we, we kind of stayed put and tried to learn what we could from the people that jumped both ways. We sent the DIF team, that you're familiar with, to regional, state, national, anywhere that we could go and glean any information from other people that were fighting the same fight. We wanted to find out what people were doing that worked or didn't work, so that we could, again, guide what we did next. Going into the 2425 school year with that knowledge kind of in hand, the, the technology team spearheaded a group, but that group was made up of our CNI directors, EC, EC directors as well, student support services and others. And that was the core team that did a lot of the work that you're witnessing here today. So that team, that cross-functional team, came up first with what we ended up calling kind of our red lines. We wanted to start with what we would not do, before we got into what we would do. So for us, there are three, and I'll lay those out for you now. So, number one, we were not going to allow teaching and learning to be undermined by these products. Next, we were not going to expose our students to unsafe products. And last, we were not going to expose our children to any of these products before it was developmentally appropriate. So with those kind of red lines in place, we looked at our first draft. Looked at what other people had done before, put those against our red lines, and came up with our first draft. That draft was reviewed by multiple teacher groups, administrators, senior staff. And we went through a couple of different iterations of that, of that process. And finally, in about April or May of 2025, Dr. Locklear accepted the final version of that document for, for what we have now as our, as our official guidance. So before I leave 2425, I want to draw it back again. So there were, there were multiple phases of this. I want to talk a bit about training. So we knew ultimately we had to put this out to students and others. But before we could get there, we had, we had, we had, we knew we had to coach our teachers up. So we started in the beginning of the 2425 school year. And then February of '25, we started training our teachers as well. That first round of training had nothing to do with students. It was purely about demystifying the technology, so they understood what it was. We talked about, and again, part of that is knowing the nature of these products. They consume information to then reproduce or repurpose that for others. So if that's the case, what could we never put in there? So nothing that we don't want to come out somewhere else. So we were always educating on that as well. We looked at it from the teacher proficiency side. We looked at it from the teacher material side, the classroom, maybe lesson planning side, those elements. So it was just from the teacher point of view, the principal point of view, how they could use these tools for, for their jobs. All right. So that takes us to the end of 2025. We had trained everybody in the district K5, and our instructional staff, and our administrators. So now we're entering the '25, '26 school year, just a few months ago, which feels much, much longer. Beginning with senior leadership, over the summer, we introduced our principals to the training that would go out to all staff and all students. So for all staff, that was a 15-minute video that they would watch, similar to what you and I are doing now, about what the guidance is, how they would use it in their classroom. Now, this is where it transitioned to with students. I'll talk more about that in a minute. The principals got to look at that video first. They also watched a five-minute video that all of our six through 12 students had to watch and acknowledge as well. So at this time, we've got 655 teachers that have undergone, I'm sorry, gone through that training, 7,507 students in grade six through 12 that had undergone that training as well. So that was our big push at the beginning of the year to launch this. The students were supposed to have watched that in the first 10 days of school, and that seems to have been the case across the board. Those numbers reflect our, our enrollment in grade six through 12. Along with that viewing that the, the teachers and students did, and the acknowledgement, they also got a copy of that chart that I'll, I'll talk about in a minute. But you'll see this displayed on the walls of every six through 12 classroom in Moore County Schools with, with no variation. We'll talk about that in a little bit. All right. So generative AI guidance for our teachers and our staff. So this is kind of our, kind of our guiding light here for our teachers and staff. We wanted staff to be trained on how generative and analytic AI can help them teach and complete administrative tasks. All right. So generative AI is like any other tool at our teachers' disposal. It can improve teaching and learning when used well. Teacher training is, again, always enforced that AI tools, or any tool that they choose to use in their classroom, for that matter, should support, not replace, what we know what already works. In Moore County Schools, those are our instructional frameworks and our Moore County way. We've worked very hard to put those in place, and we would not want to do anything that would weaken those products. AI tools can improve great instruction in a few different ways that can happen. They can provide even more differentiated material for their students. They could also use these, use these tools to train themselves. They could also use these, use these tools to train themselves on how to incorporate more, you know, higher-order questioning skills or incorporate more rigor into their lessons. Generative AI is like a class of tools, can help teachers strengthen and deepen the resources at their disposal and provide greater learning opportunities for their students. Again, all of our training is always included, again, those privacy best practices and security materials for our teachers as well. For our students, students should practice with generative AI tools in a safe, managed and age-appropriate environment. So, let me show you how we got ourselves to there. Let's start with student safety. So, in Moore County schools, student access is limited to the number of products they can use. This year, they have access to two products, both of which are included in our Google EDU account, and I'll tell you why that matters in a second. The first is Gemini. Gemini is Google's answer to ChatGPT, so very similar products. It's a brainstorming and prototyping tool. It's fast, it's creative. Notebook LM is the second product. It's kind of a different flavor of AI. This one is more analytic in nature. So, Gemini or ChatGPT is open to the entire internet for good, bad, or ugly. Notebook LM, though, is different. I, as the user, I actually vet the sources on the way in, and then it only goes against those particular sources. So, again, you're kind of filtering out some of that stuff on the front end instead of having to go to the back and, and fact-check everything. So, two different, two different products there, again, both within the Google, Google world. So, we chose these two products for a number of reasons. The first that I would say is that, and the most important for this slide, certainly, part of our Google EDU account, this is governed by our existing SDA agreements with Google already. Google has agreed to not train against our students, our staff, anything that gets input into that. We also have increased ability to, there's age restrictions that we can put on those tools inside of it. So, just again, one more layer of protection about what goes in. We also have more visibility into what gets put in as well. So, those, those, those prompts, for example, we have greater visibility into that. So, it's just one more layer of protection and one more way to know that these products are going to be used more responsibly and avoid misuse. Okay, so those two tools are available, but not to all of our students. Remember, we said that we're not going to expose these students to tools before they're developmentally appropriate. In K-five, it is not appropriate for our children to engage with a chatbot directly. They don't know what they're working with, they don't understand platform versus human. So, at that point, it wouldn't be appropriate for those students. Now, what you would see potentially is I, as the teacher, I may pull up a chat, and you, as my students, we may work on it together. If I'm doing this as a teacher, I'm doing the think-out-loud, I'm explaining what I'm doing, I'm explaining that I'm prompting, I'm explaining what's going on behind the scenes and how we can customize this and do that. But all the whole of the time, I'm, I'm explicitly explaining, this is a computer platform, not a person. Again, just trying to teach them it's the technology under the hood of what they're working with. Grade six, eight, that will shift a little bit. In six, eight, students may have direct access with a chat, with a chatbot, again, Gemini or Notebook LM, but that's going to come under the direct supervision of their staff. So, this would be, you know, potentially, we've all written a paragraph or something like that on our own. Now, the teacher may direct me to pull it up, a Gemini up. We may type in our material to practice that typing one more time and have it run a grammatical or spelling check or, you know, different things that I, as a teacher, I'm showing the kids how to improve their writing with that. And then we may look and see, well, why was that grammatically incorrect? What are some of those things we can do? So, it's that guided practice. Finally, in grades nine through twelve, again, I've got that student in my head of, of, you know, applying for scholarships, applying for different things. At nine through twelve, we would like our kids to be capable of using these tools for their, for their own application. Maybe that's drafting ideas, refining essays, they're, they're accomplishing tasks, they're polishing their work. That's grade nine through twelve. So, that's our gradual release there. And that brings me to the document that you have in front of you. I have trouble reading that. Y'all's eyesight is probably better, but I, you know, there you go. So, for the students that can use AI, when they are allowed to use AI, this document communicates to what extent they can use it and what their responsibilities are on the backend. This, again, went through a lot of different revisions as well. We really wanted to find a tool that communicated effectively and was usable in our classrooms, and this is where we landed. So, what you're holding there is a district-wide document. You'll find it in every classroom in grade six through twelve. It's a standard communication tool, and I want to emphasize communication tool, so that teachers, students and parents know exactly what's allowable on any given assignment. Really want to make sure everyone understands what the rules of any given game is. So, if I've got a student in middle school and a school in high school, a level one is a level one. Teachers are not allowed to use an alternative scale. They're not, they're not allowed to modify the scale that's in front of them. Now, we do, for example, like, at the end of the year, we'll pull our teachers back in and say, is this tool successful? Or do we need to modify it? So, you know, things will change over time, but during the school year, this is the scale that we, as a group, use because that helps us communicate with those parents when, when the, when the goalpost isn't being moved classroom to classroom. Same thing for our kids. Couple notes about this. I feel bad for our students. I've made them acknowledge several different times that they are in fact aware that the default level for every assignment in Moore County schools is zero unless they are explicitly directed by their teacher on a given assignment. So, that's the expectation. The next thing I want to tell you about this-
Can I interrupt for a second?
Please.
So, is it the teacher who says this assignment is A two?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Every classroom, every teacher, so the scale is always the same, but it's up to the teacher. So, let me, let me talk around that for a minute, and you can, you can redirect me if need be. So, when you're looking at this scale, it's in no way aligned to grades. It's not a freshman or level this, seniors or level that. There's no expectation that a school grows a child from a zero to a four. We don't see this as a growth scale. That's not its purpose. So, who decides? On any given assignment, it's zero unless I, the teacher, say differently. If I'm the kid, I'm not allowed to say after the fact, but I thought it was. No, it's a zero unless it's explicitly, explicitly done. If a teacher feels most comfortable or, you know, curriculum-wise, if it's most appropriate in that classroom that they stay at a zero from day one to day one eighty, so be it. There's no expectation that they use it. That's not what the scale's for. Levels three and four, I'd be hard-pressed to come up with an example that I can think of in a high school where I would use a, a level three or four in my classroom. I don't think they'll be used, but if a teacher determines that it would be appropriate for a given assignment, the scale can accommodate it. So, we were trying to find a document and a framework that could scale up if need be, but we don't, we are not, I guess, promoting or even anticipating the highest levels of this thing to be reached. Did that answer your question? Okay. All right, one thing that I'll, I'll have you note there. So, you see it goes zero to four across the top. On the left-hand side of that document, it says the, the different things that I can use for that. So, for example, if I'm at a level two, I'm allowed to use brainstorming and idea generation, outline or structure, and I can use it for editing and proofreading. But the bottom of that document is, is the, again, the other side of that. So, if I'm to use those things, then I, as a student, know I have to show documentation of the chat logs or the prompts that I use to, to achieve those outcomes. And I also have to have a disclosure of, I did use it for these purposes at this time. So, that's the, that's the tool that we have for this school year and how we've laid it out. So, that's our framework for the twenty-five and twenty-six, twenty-six school years for our staff and our students. Again, we're trying to, to, you know, thread this needle, frankly, in two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six of knowledge of the product, getting ready for adult proficiency, but also maintaining a safe and healthy environment for our students to learn. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to do my best to answer them.
Two questions, one's very general. Are we seeing a transition from a digital world of decision support into the world of decision, decision-making for you? We, we got the answer in, the machine gives us the answer.
You're asking me to answer way above my pay grade, you realize that?
That's okay, you can handle it.
All right. I will say that as a, beyond a school system, we are going to have to grapple with that question. I do think that it's going to be there if people decide to go that direction. That was a cryptic answer for you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Second, second question. Does this, does this signal the, the end of handwriting and book reading?
No, no, not at all. So, part of our training is, you know, we have a lot of teachers, understandably. And I mean, I started teaching back in, I don't know, oh-one, something like that. At that time, a lot of people were very nervous about Google being invented, and kids can just look up answers. And we were nervous about the academic integrity that was going on. How can we ensure that this? So, the answer is still, put everything away and get a sheet of paper out. That's always part of our training. So, if I'm a teacher that, and I mean, this is what we've told all of our teachers to do, we've encouraged them to do. If you have any concerns over this, day one, clear everything off, write me one paragraph about what you did last summer. Doesn't matter what they write, you're getting kind of a sample to go against. If you end up writing Shakespeare three years later, I have something to go against. We would then have that kind of repeated maybe each quarter, each semester, each whatever. So, no, I see this as going hand in hand. I, I don't think it undermines, especially as we've laid it out, would be my hope. No, I, I think that would be actually partly integral to making sure that your classroom runs away at all run.
So, you've got a marriage between the analog and the digital one?
I'm a big fan of the analog, big fan of the analog. Yeah, I, I hope that would not go away in our classrooms. No, they would be expected to, to write and read and do all the things. This is something that, again, we want them to be proficient in. We were not a district that went all in. We don't, we won't be going all in. We still think there's an awful lot of value in everything else we've also been doing. So, this is something we want them to have exposure to and awareness of, but this isn't going to take over what we do. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
I have a few. First of all, I want to say, I'm really happy we got to see this. I'm not sure if we have Mr. Benway to thank for that. But I think it is so wonderful that the district, you know, put such sustained effort into gathering information and creating this, this format, this, this framework, I guess is the right word, for the incorporation of AI and training the teachers. So, I have found that ChatGPT does some handy things for me when I am teaching, but I've had to figure it out all myself. So, it's wonderful that you are giving teachers those tools to better use their time, to differentiate, et cetera. But I have a kind of diverse range of questions. So, first of all, the Notebook LM, you said you vet the sources going in. Does that mean that Moore County's version of Notebook IM exists solely on stuff that you fed it? Like textbooks and stuff?
Let me clarify that, yeah. So, in this case, you as a user, so Dr. Doll, you would have your Notebook LM instant. You can create as many notebooks as you like. Each notebook contains and is based around a theme that you decide. So, it's not me and IT doing that, it's you as the user doing that. So, if you have a, a unit on quantum mechanics, you can feed it every PowerPoint, you can feed it every whatever. Those exist inside of your Notebook LM in that notebook space. And within that, you can ask questions against it. It'll produce a quiz for you to study by. It'll actually produce a podcast for you to listen to, which is, it's a little bit out there, but it's pretty interesting.
Is this available to board members to play with?
I'll look you up. It, it is awfully interesting. Our principals in particular have had a lot of value in that one. Being a principal is a lot like drinking out of a fire hose, and you need to be able to come up with information instantly. It's very good for that purpose. So, we feed in a lot of our information that they need to know. And if, if they need to know what's happening on a certain day, they can enter that data in or just prompt the question. It'll look at just those resources and provide an answer. So, Notebook LM, it's a little bit different than your ChatGPTs or Geminis of the world.
Got it, that sounds extremely cool. Okay, my next question, so again, I have some familiarity with ChatGPT, I use it at work. And it, it includes all these attaboys, right? All this reinforcing behavior. Ah, you know, you want to do this, good idea. And I've heard of people getting, sorry? You get the sadistic version?
Should we get a sarcastic version?
Sarcastic version. Yeah, I guess you can train it to have different, different personalities. I haven't done that, but I've heard of people kind of getting addicted to this reinforcement. Is this something we worry about at the school level?
What I will tell you is I, I'm a worrier, I worry about everything. But specifically with the school context, with the tools that we've selected and the reasons why we've selected them, you're not going to see that with these tools. One of the reasons that we picked the two is having two things to pay attention to is reasonable for myself and Kent and the rest of the folks that help us do that. Opening up the wild world of AI, you've got a lot of niche products, you've got a lot of other products that can, like, anyway, I can't keep my eye on all the things. The products that we selected are, are not really inclined to do what you're describing, although that is a very real thing. I would be more worried about that on students' personal devices that they would have access to that aren't.
Okay, and my last question, again, these are all over the map. Is it, on the levels on the chart, is it a burden on teachers to police the levels? How hard do teachers have to work to make sure that kids are using AI legally?
So, did a quick survey. So, there's a small group of teachers. I had each school basically send me someone that they considered to be a technical leader in their building. That became the AI teacher code word. So, again, we're about three months in now, in the grand scheme, it's been pretty quick. At this time, their, their snapshot feedback was two or three weeks ago. They said that this tool is very usable, it's, it's very readable, it's understandable, it's all the things. Where they did point out a deficit, though, and what I'm, and, you know, you mentioned training. Training, I'm, I'm in business for a long time with this. So, the, the next training piece that got exposed in that survey was, I understand what these levels are. I don't know how to coach my students into a certain level. So, that's the next training piece for us. So, I guess we're not to your question yet. I think at this time, most of our teachers, they're aware of it, we're on level zero, they're feeling good. Some are getting up into a level one, but for the most part, you're not seeing teachers using all over the place to where that question might come in.
Thank you.
Welcome.
You know their comments?
Well, I had just a few. Great job on the rollout. This is a tricky thing that a lot of districts are doing in a lot of poor ways, I believe. And I think we've done a really good job here. I did have a couple of questions and then I guess a couple of comments. One thing that you said that was interesting to me is, and it's, it may be covered in this AI chat logs, but the visibility into the prompts. And so, is that something teachers can have access to or the students generate the prompts and then hand in? Or, I've not messed around with that.
So, again, I think this, this has a couple of different areas that I'll answer. So, with Gemini, if I was turning an assignment in and I had to turn in my prompts, that at this point would be, you know, a Ctrl-P, basically, and I would produce that into a Google document and do it that way.
Gotcha.
Do teachers have access into that? If we're talking about more of a, maybe a concern or a security piece, that's where Director Eklund and I would be able to pull those up when needed. But again, one of the reasons we chose Google is, or the, the Google versions of these products is that there's actually, it will stop what it perceives to be a hateful prompt, a derogatory prompt, those kind of things. It'll simply say, I'm not able to answer that question. Students also are not allowed to generate images, which personally I take comfort in.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. So, there are some things built into these particular products that I, I like in that, in that regard.
Yeah, I think that's, that's exactly right. And that Notebook LM really is fascinating. If I was a teacher, that would be where I'd be relying on a lot, just because, what he's describing, exactly right. You feed in the documents and then it only allows you to search those documents and generate things. So, that's really cool product. Just as a couple of comments, so I was getting flashbacks, of course, as we're doing this because this is very similar to when we rolled out the internet in schools. It's similar to when we rolled out one-to-one devices in schools. There was a time where we relied on cell phones for students to use their cell phones in place of some of their devices. All these security issues, and I am a worrier. And so, your concern, I think, is well-founded, especially the idea of an AI chatbot becoming a source of friendship or companionship or relying on them for advice. I think that's a bad idea, and I think our- I think that's a bad idea and I think our counselors will probably be working through all that concern. I know they will be. Anyway, just general comments, um, because this is a very fascinating topic for me. Things change quick. One thing I would say is I think it's a good opportunity to lean into what Mr. Herring is saying. The critical skills and the critical thinking and the durable skills, because those are the skills, communication, collaboration, adaptability, flexibility, um, critical thinking, that the more you focus on those skills, the more students have a chance of doing this the right way. And also leaning into the trades. I've, I've, I've seen a couple, um, a couple of presentations on this. And one thing that's really interesting is to really think about what are the jobs that are AI proof? You know, what are the skilled labor that we need? What are the things that we need to build with our hands? Um, and also leaning into that, because those jobs are going to be huge in the future. Um, and they won't be able to outsource to a chatbot.
I think for now, law might be on that list.
Law is another great, and there's a lot of great use, and there are a lot of uses that we shouldn't be using it for. Um, and then lastly, I'll just mention this. I know this is a, um, concern. I guess I'll ask if you've got any updates on this. Um, computer science as a field is being dramatically, um, influenced by this. Um, and I was just kind of wondering kind of any kind of guidance you had with DPI or CTE, or how things may be changing in the realm of how we're teaching computer science and what that looks like in three years, four years, yada, yada, yada.
Well, if I may, I'd like to defer to Dr. Scott or maybe Jamie Signan. To give you more up to date on that, I just don't want, I don't want to misrepresent what DPI is doing. I just happen to be part of those conversations. Um, as far as our K five program, our, and I'll speak for, for my department, our K five program is largely unchanged. We teach fundamental computer science at those levels. We introduce, uh, coding as young as kindergarten. But the focus of that is not necessarily on the coding itself. It's more about like, uh, algorithmic thinking, processes, systems, things like that. So we work very hard on building that foundation. Uh, some of you have been to our elementary robotics before, uh, and you've seen that in action. How that's going to play out in our secondary schools, I'm also very interested to see. I, I think when DPI rolled out the, the idea of having computer science in all of our high schools, I think that was great. Um, a, a good, a good idea, but I think the, the market is shifting so fast now.
Right.
That, that is a difficult target to hit.
Right. Well, and I wasn't, might mean to put you on the spot, because I know it's a nebulous thing and we have a computer science requirement for graduation now. And so just to keep that on everyone's radar that that, those are going to be, there's going to be changes are forced upon that, um, because of what we're seeing. So just be aware of that. So that's all. Great job. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Hansley?
Yeah, I would just like to say, uh, I am actually, actually I'm not surprised. I was, I was going to say I'm pleasantly surprised, but I'm happy to see that we were leaning into this because this is going, I mean, there's honor code, there's integrity issues. There's, uh, you know, um, Mr. Johnson's worried about someone having an AI companion. I'm worried about a little Stewie creating a, a squadron or a battalion of Terminators and destroying the school or something. But, right, but anyway, no, this is good to lean into this because this is going to be quite, as everyone knows, the paradigm change and whatnot. So.
Ms. Davis?
I have a question. Do, uh, because most of what I had written down was already covered. Do you feel like you have enough resources yourself and your department and team to, to keep up with? I mean, it, it changes so fast. I can't wrap my head around how you guys keep up. So if, and I might be, I'm probably putting you on the spot, but, um, what can we do to best support you?
Well, I, I will say first off, Dr. Locklear has already done a lot. So when I said that that group of, uh, kind of that, that core group that drove a lot of this, those were all director level people. Uh, and that came, so when the superintendent says something, that has a different weight to it. Uh, when the directors are in the room of CNI and EC, because, uh, one thing that we identified first is this is not a technology issue. This is just a, this is everything that we do now issue. Uh, it may be today or down the road, but it involves everybody. So, uh, you know, our EC directors were heavily involved. Like you name it, we had all hands on deck. So that was a great support for us. Our principals have been great about giving us time because time is probably our, our, uh, most difficult resource to, to pin down. But February fourteenth, on short notice, we went out and we trained every elementary school in one day. Uh, I have a team of eight and we mobilized. We got that done. In the weeks following that, we hit every secondary school. So I will say that, uh, I'm very lucky and blessed to have the team that I have around me, Doc, you know, Director Eklund, all the group. Uh, and we're doing well, but as far as keeping up with the rate of change, uh, I would say we're doing as well as anybody. So we work very hard at it, um, and limiting those products again is, is helpful.
Right. I want to, uh, I appreciate the fact that you guys didn't just rush headlong into making any decision and you took your time and, and saw what was being done correctly and what wasn't being done correctly. And that speaks volumes since, um, it's only a good thing to move quickly if you're going the right direction. If you're not going the right direction, it's, you save time sometimes by slow down to speed up kind of thing. Anyway.
All right. Thank you very much. That was very impressive and I can see, I can see why, uh, Dr. Locklear shared you with the other superintendents there. But you can't leave us. Okay. Just remember. But thank you.
Thank you, Will. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Yeah, put them to work. That was excellent. Thank you. And now we're at, um, thank you. Item B, board committee reports and updates. And I know I've got my safety committee. Ms. Davis, did you want to share anything about policy committee or anything?
I guess, I guess the only thing that we didn't touch on was that, um, the feedback that was received. Do you, maybe Dr. Doll might want to speak about the feedback that was received for the dress code. Came back as, um, that our principals support the way that the dress code is now with no recommended changes. And so we just decided to leave it as is for the moment. If you wanted to speak on it, since that's something that you brought to the committee, that'd be fine by me. Otherwise, I don't have anything to add.
I, you know, that's the way I remember. If anybody wants more details, uh, Ms. Signan was the one who reported to us. Do you have that information with you? Um, unless, does somebody want these details? Or are you content with the fact that it gave us the, the appearance that principals were happy with the dress code as is and that changes were not required?
And the teacher advisory council?
And the teachers. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to know what brought this, what brought it up.
Um, Joe Patterson, who's the principal of Northmore, had, um, forwarded a request. And I don't remember at this point to whom it was sent or how we got it. But he wanted us to consider the head coverings aspect of the, uh, of the dress code. And my memories of working at that school, which is Northmore, um, were that, you know, there are a number of reasons at that location that really kind of support, uh, especially boys having ball caps. And then, uh, you know, with several different buildings and the fact that you're going outside between classes and the sun is shining. Um, and then they come into classes and they have a limited workspace and, and you can get into conflicts with them over taking their hats off. So I remembered that being an issue that I thought that the staff cared about. So I kind of, um, saw that request and decided to pick it up and, and kind of, um, pursue it. But, but this is the result. I mean, uh, there's no higher authority than the people of Moore County schools as to what Moore County schools need, I think. Well, there's a teacher advisory council and a corresponding principals group. Isn't that correct, Dr. Locklear?
Yes, ma'am. And.
And their report was, um, you know, general consensus, uh, that they were content with the dress code as is. Is that representing it accurately? Okay.
Thank you very much. Um, now moving on to our temporary safety committee. We met on October twentieth, twenty twenty five. And you can, you've got a copy of the draft minutes on, um, the webpage. But just in brief, we reviewed, Ms. Signum reviewed, um, the history of the Moore County Schools Police Department with training standards and pay scale. Dr. Locklear reviewed the, um, information about separation allowance under policy thirty six hundred seventy four fifty, police officer program. And then Ms. Signum and interim Chief Gooch reviewed the findings from the local municipalities regarding using off-duty officers at schools shared, um, with MC police officers. We had Chief Deputy Andy Conway to talk a little bit about the Moore County Sheriff's Department's cadet program. Mr. Benway presented a draft problem assessment, um, that he recommended. And what we learned since then was, um, uh, Chief Deputy Conway shared that he found out about the administration code of one-year probationary period. So we were not, uh, we're not able to, um, take advantage of the cadet program at this time that we would need to pass legislation or request that from our local legislators, specific to Moore County to address cadet program, outlining specific training objectives and timeframes. Um, committee chair, uh, the policy committee, Ms. Davis and her team are working to, uh, you know, to discuss policy thirty, thirty six sixty and seventy four fifty with about our police program to find out about that separation allowance, but that's still in discussion. If, if you'll let me finish, if you don't mind, so I don't lose my train of thought. Um, Vice Chair Davis formally requested, uh, that our board attorney consider, uh, helping us with a draft resolution to address roadblocks that we encounter when hiring SROs. And then I don't know if you, some of you attended the Board of Commissioners work session that we did attend. And Sheriff Fields even mentioned it with, uh, the Board of Commissioners that he agreed to support us with off-duty officers, but that, um, at this time, there is a legislation requirement. If he were to take it or we would ask him to take it over. Um, another, you know, I'm going to ask my committee members to help me if I forget anything, but we must consider financial impact of hiring off-duty officers because it is a high price tag at fifty five dollars an hour. And there's a limitation on how many hours that they can work. And we did recently hire a new officer, um, I understand, based off of our conversation. So we, we did get that in place and that's good news. In our next meeting, we will review our progress and recommend next steps. But I'd like, um, Mr. Benway or Vice Chair Davis, if I missed anything or you want to add anything, and then we'll take questions.
Yeah, just, just one comment. I think it's vital that Andy Conway be part of this. And I would hope that he would continue to be a continuing, uh, contributor to this, to this process. Uh, we've got a process in, in, in motion at this point, and I think that's an important thing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I guess the only, there was, I have to get my, for the policy committee. I don't know if you guys saw the email from Dr. Locklear, that the policy that we were reviewing. We were anticipating it bringing back with the lawyers', um, assistance for today or next week's meeting. But it looks like it needs to be looked through more fine, with a fine tooth comb. Uh, and we'll be going back over it on our next policy committee meeting, which we're trying to expedite and not wait the three months that we typically do for policy committees.
Okay. All right. Yes.
I have a couple of questions on the, uh, safety committee. Uh, so, uh, the first thing is, um, uh, this additional policy, you said something about separation pay. I don't understand what this policy is. You guys are looking at changing for SROs.
Well, it's still under discussion right now, so we're, we just, we're, we're, we're not clear about the details on that exactly right at this moment. But there is a policy that, you know, hinders, um, our separation allowance when our officers retire. But that's in basic terms.
The percentage, yes.
I remember when I first got elected, when I first got elected to the school board, uh, the then chief deputy asked me to look into some policy that we had and wanted, uh, changed. The sheriff office has been wanting something changed in our policy, something to do with allowing double dip in retirement or something.
Yeah, law enforcement officers get a special separation allowance when they retire based on a formula, it's formula driven. Uh, in our policy, uh, when officers retire with ten years of experience, only get fifty percent of that. It's, it takes twenty years to get a hundred. And so that's the piece that's being looked at and discussed in, in committee before bringing a recommendation to the board.
A hundred percent retirement at ten years?
Right. There's, there's some finite details of that. It's formula driven.
I was just kind of curious.
It's not like a hundred percent of your retirement. It's a formula driven deal.
Who pays for it, you know?
Correct. It is a board liability that the board would have to be aware of. Yes, sir.
Right. Um, so I would caution, you know, talking about setting up a committee going forward. Um, when I first got on the school board, there was a safety committee that advised our SROs. And it had met for a very, very long time, maybe a decade, and it met quarterly, semi-annually. And it had representatives from the sheriff's department on it. It had people from Moore County Emergency Services. It had people from the central office. It had like twelve people on it and it met quarter. I knew some of the people on it and it met quarterly, semi, do you recall semi-annually or quarterly? I don't, I don't know.
It's possibly quarterly. Yes, sir.
Yeah, but it met for a long time. But you know what they didn't discuss? They never discussed, have your officers had trauma medical training and are they equipped for trauma medical? No one ever asked. They met this, this committee, they had the chief deputy on, on there, right? And no one asked, when was the last time your SROs had active shooter training? Because if someone had asked on that committee made up of law enforcement, who explicitly, someone would have answered, oh, we haven't had active shooter training in five years. So my, my caution to everyone here is just because you set a committee up and they meet for croissants and coffee, you know, uh, four times a year, doesn't mean they actually, you know, are doing what they're supposed to do because they, they clearly did not. Um, the other question I have for the, for the board is I see you guys are doing a lot of stuff. You know, you're looking at these part-time officers. Are you all exploring the question, should we have the SROs at all? Uh, what's the cost of just turning it over to the sheriff's department? Because that seems to be the cheapest alternative and the time prove. Are you guys exploring that question? Because I haven't seen that question explored.
Well, I have talked to, uh, Sheriff Fields about it, but we're not ready to release that information right at this time.
Okay. I just haven't seen it in the minutes. So the, so the committee's answering that question.
Well, I'll put it on, you know, the agenda for next time. I think that's a great question to ask.
Yeah. What's the cost? And you know, what does Lee County pay? It's not fifty five dollars an officer. You know, that's, that's to pay for someone's access time. Well, I mean, whoever pays for it, there's the cost. And that's my, you know, there's the cost of what, well, the ghost fleet, so to speak, doesn't cost. It's, it's what it would cost us now versus what it would cost police staff. So anyway, I would just, that, that question needs to be looked into.
Thanks, sir. All right. We're at.
I have some construction things.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, Mr. Hansley.
I, uh, so, um, if I, if I could, um, so, um, everybody wanted input from the stakeholders. And I think we got input from the stakeholders. Um, uh, I just want to talk about where we're at and a potential road ahead. I mean, look, we have a piece of property, right? That is an ideal location to build a school. May not be the ideal location, but we have a piece of property. Uh, we need a new elementary school. Uh, we need a new high school. And then once we build that, we can remodel, you know, and go from there. Uh, we have a few unhappy stakeholders. And, um, the other interesting thing is when you look at all that and you're like, look, so we have a piece of property. We need an elementary school. We have a high school. We have some unhappy stakeholders. And we're facing the possibility for a November twenty twenty six bond issue for both an elementary school and a high school. I can tell you this. Here's my assessment. If you listen to what the county commissioner said and you kind of read between the lines, nobody wants to do a bond issue for a thirty five million dollar elementary school, right? The, the high school is a different issue. That's real money, right? Nobody wants to do a bond issue for an elementary school that cash can be paid for. But what they want is they want a site that is non-controversial, right? That's my takeaway, right? Everyone agrees that we need new schools. Everyone, we need this. And my guess is, is that if we deliver a. And my guess is, is that if we deliver a, um, a well-coordinated, uh, non-controversial from the stakeholder standpoint, uh, elementary school site, um, that, that cash will be paid for that school, and then we can focus a bond issue on a high school. The question is, how do we rapidly get there? My, my suggestion would be, we prepare for two different courses of action while, uh, while working feverishly on the first one, right? So, you know, what I heard at the county commissioners' meeting was, there is a tight schedule to get on the bond issue, assuming we want to get on the bond issue, right? Which I assume we do, right? So, um, my suggestion would be, I would start working a package of the bond issue for an elementary school and a high school, and a high school by itself, right? And, and what we do, why the staff is working on all that and, and doing all that hor, God, I can only imagine the horrible paperwork to do it. And what we do is, we, we, and I've got an idea how to do this, we rapidly, cause we don't have much time, work with the stakeholders, and the stakeholders are the Carthage Commissioners, uh, the county commissioners, and the public. I know you can't please, you know, you could have the, you cannot please everyone on the public, but we need to listen to them. But I think if we get our ducks in a row, we ought to have the right people at the table talking to explain the course of action and make sure they're explored. I think we could rapidly have meetings that comply with the open meetings law and keep everyone happy, and come up with, uh, by mid-December, a course of action that everyone will be happy at. And I believe if we have a course of action, everyone's sitting there smiling, then, uh, look, the county commissioners do not want to vote to spend the public's money as long as there's controversy on spending the public's money. If we can take the controversy out of that and have all the stakeholders happy, I am quite sure that we can pay cash for the elementary school and then just focus on the high school. And my suggestion for doing it just real quick would be, um, and we don't have much time, but we gotta go back to, look, Carthage Commissioners, here's the three different courses of action as far as, you know, two small schools. Cause again, look, we chose the most efficient route, but that's maybe not what, you know, maybe people want to spend a little more and get the two-school solution. But I think we rapidly go back and we explain to the stakeholders, cause we did all this, uh, but we need to explain the three different courses of action and the pros and cons of each, get the feedback from the county commissioners, get the feedback from, uh, from the, uh, from the Carthage Commissioners. And I know we did a public hearing once, but we just do another one and let's get some more people here, let's get there, go back, refine it, and then see what we can do. But if we can avoid a bond issue for the elementary school and we can get consensus, I think that's the road ahead.
Thank you, sir.
Any thoughts on that?
Well, we need to get a construction committee-
Okay.
-meeting squared away. And we also, um, have an, an email going out to get with our town of Carthage Commissioners. So if you can respond to Cindy as quickly as possible, that'd be great. I know this is a quick turnaround, but let's, we'll do our best.
It, so, I mean, look, if, if, if we can get our ducks, and I'm sorry to interrupt, if we can get our ducks in a row, if we can have probably four well-placed, timely meetings and we come up with a solution that everyone agrees with, that I think we can go back to paying cash because the county commissioners just don't want to, my, this is my take, they don't want to spend the public's money as long as there's controversy.
Since this is more of a discussion than a committee report, since the construction committee hasn't met in a long time, I'm just gonna put in that, that, well, I, I accept the principle of trying to create a, a picture that is more attractive to the commissioners. Um, I don't necessarily think that our goal should be no controversy. I've, I've been advised by somebody who should know that, uh, any place we built in Moore County would, um, produce, um, as Mr. Benway called them, nimby's people who, you know, don't want it built next to them.
Well, and I would just add that, um, I think public's input is always critical. I think, um, at our public hearing, I think it would be good for all the members of public to go back and watch that. Um, and I would also suggest that, uh, if we're gonna gather public input again, which I think, I think we should, I think we need to find ways of people giving input that maybe would not feel comfortable coming to a public meeting that's a heated environment. Um, I believe that there are people out there that have strong feelings on this, but would avoid drama in all aspects, and I just think we need to find a way to collect opinion from all stakeholders that's, um, good feedback.
I've heard from a number of those people, so I, I believe they exist and there may be quite a few of them.
Well, and I don't know. I mean, there may or may not be. I just want to make sure it's comfortable for everyone to voice their opinion.
All right. Appreciate, appreciate all those comments, and we are at item C, Superintendent Update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick points Mr. Hensley hit on, and I just wanted to make sure, uh, as the board is aware, several board members attended, which, uh, appreciate, uh, the county commissioners' work session on Thursday, October thirtieth, uh, where they did debrief, uh, the joint meeting. Uh, it was, um, strongly encouraged, as we've already heard from the chair, uh, that the Board of Education, uh, sits down and has a board-to-board meeting with the town of Carthage. Um, my perspective is not the same, in all due respect, as Mr. Hensley. I, I don't know if the expectation is that we bring a site that has no controversy. I don't know if that's possible, but the expectation is that, what I heard, is that to make sure we're sitting down with the entire town board of Carthage and have that conversation, that Ms. Purvis has that opportunity to lay out all the information like she's been able to do. So we're working on that as the chair said.
How about a more coordinated plan?
Sure, sure. Um, the second thing that was clear at this point is that we need to plan for Carthage Elementary School, that was, uh, to be on the November twenty-six bond referendum. They also strongly wanted to, to make sure we had information for our high school need included on that referendum. And as Mr. Hensley noted, that's a very quick turnaround for January twenty-twenty-six. To that end, Ms. Purvis is already looking to issue another RFQ for our high school need in the, in a, in a way in which it would cover all of the options that the board's currently looking at, so we can get some architects to send back information, of course, looking again, like we did for the elementary school, to have an architecture who has, I'm not calling it the right thing, a template already in place. There's another word starts with a P and I never can remember, but a template that is already in place that they've used on other sites. That makes it more cost-efficient, that, that helps the bill be quicker. And so like the choice of pinnacle for Carthage, looking for an architect, uh, who is able to do that. So we have an estimated cost on it, and she will also do some research on the ex, estimated cost on land in the general area that we know already that this most likely would be located in, which is in the two-eleven corridor area. Uh, so Ms. Purvis is already hard at work on that and looking at that, so we can have data to bring back to our county commissioners. And of course, the need to have that construction committee meeting as we're gaining this, uh, information to then bring to the full board. So I just wanted to update the board on those two things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're at Board Comments. Um, anyone want to make a comment? Just leave it up.
I'll start. I didn't get a chance to, earlier, there's a, I'm sorry. Okay, no, sorry. Um, looking forward to meeting with the Carthage Town Council. I know that, um, you know, the high school need, that, the pressing need, I mean, I think it goes without saying that, um, along with that, to reach out to the stakeholders early and often, I think it's a good idea. I want to shout out, um, Pinecrest sophomore, uh, Madeline Dorsh, who just, uh, ran the fastest, uh, time in state history.
Wow.
Yes. Uh, fantastic. I caught that online. She, amazing, and she's only a sophomore. She beat the state record by a full minute, is my, uh, is, is my understanding.
What was your bet?
Cross-country.
Cross-country, not, not a sprint. That would be amazing. Negative ten seconds. Um, also, of course, Union Pines football program. Huge congratulations out to Coach Till and that football program. They're doing unprecedented stuff out there on that Union Pines field and really proud of that. Um, and that was really the two things. I'd want to just make sure to shout out those, uh, students doing amazing stuff in our school system.
Anyone else? Mr. Benway?
I had the good fortune to attend the Vietnam Veterans Welcome Home event yesterday at Sand Hills, uh, Dempsey Center. Uh, Moore County Schools had its fingerprints all over. The, the Air Force ROTC folks did a superb job of just helping in general. Um, the Naval Ju- Junior ROTC did the coast, posting of the colors. It was an excellent, uh, excellent showing for Moore County. Bluebells, we have the Bluebells too, right? The string ensemble?
They're called the Bluebells. I'm not aware of that, but-
Oh, okay.
Do you know which school they were from?
That's the way they build them, those four gals with, uh, a string ensemble. Did a great job. Super, super stuff.
Probably products of Moore County Schools, if they weren't for Moore County Schools.
Yeah, I suspect. Uh, so anyways, kudos to everybody who did a great job. The, the commissioners, the trustees of the, of the Sand Hills, and, and our contribution here too. It was a good, good event. About two-hundred-and-fifty folks showed up.
Wow.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
That's incredible. All right. Anyone else? Just want to thank everybody, uh, for being here today. Thank you for your time and commitment to Moore County Schools. Um, we've got lots of good news to share, and we'll talk more on November tenth. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Okay? All in favor, say aye. All right. Thank you very much.